Thank you. All right, thank you. Before we get started, a couple of clarory matters I want to put on the record. I met in a pre-trial conference that the council last Friday. We discussed what exhibits and witnesses. By agreement of council, the interviewer witnesses followed and then agreed to as authentic and admitted. Exhibits one, two, three. Exhibit twenty-three is the great two as authentic and admitted based on the agreement to reduce. Exhibit twenty-three should only pick with the numbers A, zero, eight, eight, twenty, eight, six, eight, thirty-seven, eight, forty-nine. Exhibit twenty-four was three two as authentic and missing. No stipulation regarding exhibits twenty-five and twenty-six. Exhibits twenty-seven through thirty-six were three two as authentic and admitted. Exhibit thirty-seven is three two as authentic and no agreement has to be. Does that's your understanding, your agreement? All right. Do council want to make opening statements? Any witnesses that are going to be called to testify or not be in the hearing room hear the testimony of other witnesses till after they have testified. I don't know if it's a couple of folks in the room, but I don't know if their witnesses are straight or they're... You have to have a law. Yeah, if I'm chair, you want to take one of witnesses. Do you swear on testimony that it will be the truth, the whole truth, the truth?
Yes.
Morning, Mr. Ness, please introduce yourself.
Morning, Stephen Ness.
And what do you do for a living, Mr. Ness?
We farm in Estancia.
You're farmer in Estancia?
Yes.
Okay, and what do you...
Mainly pinto beans.
And...
Yes. Thirty-eight.
Mr. Ness, have you... Public office?
No.
Have you ever been a candidate for like...
No.
Have you ever volunteered or managed a candidate's campaign?
No. I don't mean to interrupt you, but this thing is kind of echoing after... It's like five seconds behind everything I say. Can we turn that down or how does that? Sorry. No.
Mr. Ness...
No.
Familiar with the concept of independent competition?
No. No. No.
Tell us how you know Karen.
I met her a few years ago when she was running for governor.
You know what year you met her?
Um, I guess it would have been twenty-twenty, maybe? End of twenty-twenty, November twenty-twenty, or twenty-twenty-one, I don't remember.
And you said that she was seeking election.
Correct.
Was she, at the time you met her, was she at the time seeking candidates at the primary or the Republican Party?
Yes.
And then, at some point... Yes, has...
Uh, yes.
Which one, which of your family was she in?
Um, well, my wife and my kids. And my, my mother. I was with my mother and my brother. So, may- maybe a few others, I'm not sure. Um, the same, she was running for governor, so we were trying to help her and... I just met those people.
And do you remember where, where you...
I mean, I've met her several times, uh, different places, different, um, my family, I just probably different events, campaign events.
Right, any events at your house?
Um, not my personal home. At the farm, yeah. Yes. I have not talked to her in a couple of years now, it's been a while. But at the time, I, I felt like I knew her pretty well.
And, um, is it the only sitting?
Yeah, I do. Okay. Yes. It is a billboard for Karen Bedoni.
Did you pay for the publication?
Yes.
Your, your role and how, how came about?
Um, when we started to support her, um, it was just an idea that we had to put up a billboard, so... So I decided to, to make that happen. Um, we had worked with, um, a gentleman that just walked out. David. And we'd worked with him before on a billboard, so I called him and asked if we could get, get one for, for her, so... Other family, I guess.
Standing there.
Right, my brother, just one. The artwork?
The picture that's on it.
The artwork was selected, um, I believe with, uh, Crystal. I can't really remember, I, I believe we contacted Crystal and started, maybe Karen's daughter or... Oh, they had, they had different, uh, all in different PDF or whatever they are for different signage or whatever. We picked, we picked one.
Question.
Um, she was working with her campaign, I, I don't remember what her title was.
Do you know if Karen...
Not specifically the selection, but, but, uh, with the art, yes.
What was your understanding of that?
What was her understanding of the role?
What was your understanding, Karen?
I don't know. I guess, I don't know if she had a role, much of a role in selection, but...
You said that she didn't, she wasn't really in the, in your decision selecting our...
Right.
What was your understanding of that?
Um, but she, I think she, she had got me in contact with Crystal or, or her daughter or both to select which, whichever, whichever artwork we decide.
Uh, directly to Chris? As the...
Yeah, that would probably be correct, it's, it was a long time ago. I don't remember exactly the way things played out, but... I don't know if he's the owner, if he was the one that I purchased the, the billboard from, yes. I don't, I don't know how it worked with him, if he rents them or if he owns them, I, I don't know. Correct. I don't know. This...
They concern your ballot business.
Correct.
Yes, seven, exhibit seven, the copy. Your text message is famous.
I don't, I don't think this was a response for subpoena, this looks like a text message from me and Crystal.
I'm sorry, my questions are clear. Exhibit seven.
Correct.
And did you peruse... Yeah, question about recently.
Yes.
Perused to page, um, one twenty-five.
Okay.
So, um, Mr. Ness, on April, here, April second. Crystal sent you the text message, the paper, the candidate. The message, which states it's going to be used for banners, like we never get one used or built.
Yes.
I want to ask you, I think, if, I think you remember discussing April, Crystal Navis.
Before April second? Oh, possibly, that's probably how these text messages came about.
You can ask the question, Mr. Ness.
Okay. Okay.
Um, do you, do you recall any saving...
I don't recall.
Let me ask you. Crystal mentions, but you also say her...
Yes. She was referring to the, the small print there on the, the bottom of the billboard.
Have you ever discussed the, the small print at the bottom of the billboard, Crystal?
I, again, I don't recall.
And what, what was the small print?
I'd have to look at a picture of it, I can't read it on this one, and I don't remember what it... Possibly. Okay.
Did, um, the case...
Yes. Paid for by private persons of New Mexico.
Have any...
And I don't believe so.
Have you ever used the term private persons of New Mexico?
I don't believe so.
What was your understanding of who had come up then?
Um, I, I guess just, uh, that's what me and Crystal had discussed according to the text messages. That's what they do, but...
Tell us. We don't want you just to speculate what kind of...
If you had a chance to review those segments? Or could you, uh, sitting here today, can you testify as to who had any capital or determine insertion of private persons of New Mexico?
According to this text message, it looked like, uh, Crystal.
Let's go. Page number... One thirty-one.
Okay.
At the top of that page, it's called, send you message, send you over a recording, be honest.
Okay.
That statement, yes, you have to ask to hear the recording.
No, I believe we had already had a spot picked out, but again, I, I can't speculate, I... I mean, I don't, I don't remember a lot of the contents of, of these conversations.
Outside of this text message conversation, Crystal.
I don't remember.
Let's go to... Crystal sent you takes a printer, you'll have to be this like...
Yes. This was probably the, uh, billboard artwork.
Let's go to... Page, page number...
Yes. Yes.
Why did she...
I don't remember.
Think it might refresh your recollection reviewing those text messages, text messages you exchanged with David, they rolled around that much.
Good.
Thank you.
Great. Yes. Probably for the artwork, it appears. She was, uh, it looks like Crystal was going to get into contact with David. Okay, yes.
The middle of that page, just a... Maybe something saying, hi Stephen, how are things going with the building? So, Karen...
Uh, Karen Bedoni.
Do you know who the crew is?
The people that were working with her, helping Karen.
Any more specific?
I don't know.
Let me ask you, why didn't you...
I didn't have any of that, um, artwork.
So, that, is it your testimony without the assistance of Crystal and Karen?
Correct.
Let's go to... Two, hello, text message.
I have another guy that wants to pay for another billboard, you have, uh, an idea of where it should go.
Who was the other guy?
A friend of mine, Philip Park. Um, I just wanted to know if there was any idea where they were trying to, um, uh, get in connection with certain part of the state.
Your second, where'd you go?
Yes.
What happened next?
On the text message you mean or?
Well, with, with the still. Um, you can use, you can review the text messages. But like to just keep it test. About getting the second.
Um, it looks like we would just discuss possibly I forty or I twenty-five. And. I believe we ended up putting one up on I twenty-five. I'll, I'll.
Was that, was that also purchased from?
Yeah.
And did Bill Clark pay for some portion of that billboard?
Yes.
Did you pay for the total costs of that billboard?
Yes.
Yes, you turn next to.
Yes. Text message between Karen and I. Yes.
He asked you to go to.
Yes.
So. Send a picture. I'll shoot about it. And what's that picture of?
The picture of the billboard on I four.
Why did you send this picture to Karen?
I just wanted her to know that it was done, finished and up.
And is this?
Uh, it looks like it was just me and Karen.
Was it a group?
It doesn't appear to be a group chat on this from this. I don't believe it is. Again, I don't remember, but I would say yes, but I don't remember.
With reviewing your testimony from. December twenty eighteen.
Probably so.
Can you, your deposition? And I'm going to ask you. You. One thirty-two.
Okay. Yes. Uh, yes.
Did those conversations have?
Yes. Holy smokes, that's amazing. Wow, so weird seeing my face up there.
What does Karen Bedoni say?
It's nice to see him blown up. Thank you. God bless you and your family. Hopefully we get to see many more of these go up across the state. Yes, yes, with a heart.
Remember. These messages from Karen Bedoni about the billboard today.
Can, can you ask that again?
Do you remember, do you remember? Asking different. Was it your feeling that Karen Bedoni had improved of your?
Yes. Uh, text messages between David and I.
Is David the? Operator of the two bill of adjustment discussing?
Yes.
Second. Send message. Campbell and as. The graphic states one big one is that. Discussion would all have to be able about.
Uh. Well, no, this would not be the first discussion I had with him.
Would you have called earlier?
Correct, yeah.
And that Campbell they. Provide to you.
Yes.
Ninety-five. David says, saying also try Karen. David tried to contact Karen Bedoni about the billboard.
He, yes.
And you then texted. Mr. Rayball saying, okay, I talked to him after on his own crystal. Did you talk? Karen Bedoni on May twenty, twenty-two about?
Uh, I, I don't recall.
Is in your text message to Mr. Rayball, you, you mentioned, you say I talked to her yesterday.
Okay, yeah.
Are you talking to her before Karen and then Crystal?
I, I, I was referring to Karen here, yes, so I would have talked to her the day before this, yes.
And again, I think we covered that you. The crystal.
Correct.
And. On, on two eighteen. Said David Rayball in the text message containing parts.
Correct.
Is that because were you being, part of the people's heart in the passion?
Um, Philip wanted to pay for another billboard and so I was just going to let him contact David directly. Correct. This guy wants to pay for the banner going up on I twenty-five. Give him a call and he will get you paid. That would have been close to the same time, I guess.
Can, do you? Uh, can, can you speak to the process deciding publication of that second billboard?
I don't remember. I, I believe Philip. Pick, picked um, between certain amount of artwork, which one he, he was willing to do, but I don't. All, it's probably. I don't recall exactly how it came together.
Let me ask you. If, if. I'd ask you how much money do you spend on? Awards, would you have provided that information here?
Yeah.
And. Why did you? Design the billboard supporting?
I am terrible at that kind of thing and I, I didn't have the. Anything by at all. I, I wouldn't even know where to start.
So was it your understanding or? The money for the production?
Correct.
Karen Bedoni. Said to you. I'd rather you just make donations on campaign instead of putting on the billboard. Would you have done that?
What was the question again?
Did Karen Bedoni not want you to pay the? Spanish on billboard, whether you just give your donations to my campaign? Would you have done?
Probably.
Yourself about this, Karen Bedoni? Or, or anyone associated with her campaign that be known as the private persons in Mexico?
I, I don't recall. I don't believe so.
Did you ever put yourself in public as being the private person?
No.
He's. Private person. Other than the context of Karen Bedoni.
I don't recall seeing it.
Did, did. Or Crystal ever tell you that you needed to register for the secretary? For Spanish words on these billboards?
I don't recall. Again, it's probably in these documents. I don't know off the top of my head.
We're referring. Checks. Made out. The pressure reduction step out, how much you spent?
Yeah.
It's. Twelve.
So. Somewhere in the neighborhood of five thousand dollars. Somewhere in the neighborhood of five thousand dollars. I don't remember everything about it, but yes, I do remember the day. Correct.
And any land down near Zorion Land in Estancia.
Mostly in the Estancia Valley, south of Moriarty and Estancia. Not outside of the Estancia Valley, no. Correct. Moriarty.
Also.
I do not.
So.
Yes. I don't recall, I'd have to look at the. Why would I have talked to Crystal about the payment? I I don't, I don't know what. I'm not sure exactly what you're asking, why, why did I talk to Crystal? A reason for for not talking to her?
Well, in order.
I I just assumed I was taking care of it. Sunday sent the invoice. Just took care of it.
And your name's on it.
Uh, uh, correct. I was just under the understanding that it was not her campaign, it was, it was just private people paying. Paying for it, so that's, that's my understood standing of it.
So that disclaimer was okay.
I'm yet, okay. I believe so, I believe it was the same artwork. No.
Put that on. Wow, good.
Correct. Correct. At the time I met Karen?
Yes.
No, I was not.
Okay, well, was there some like that you?
Yes.
That was to the Republican convention, you know?
Correct. I did.
And were there a group of against? If you know that that were supporting.
Uh, yeah.
Was one of those folks a man with a name like?
Yes.
And when you were there with Mr. Hobbs. What was there an incident?
I actually wasn't there with him, I, that's the first time I've ever met Mr. Hobbs was at that mention that night, but yes, there was an incident.
Those are events.
Correct. Um, he was in an argument with somebody there. With not Republican at the time, or he had. Was a Republican that switched to a Libertarian, and then he switched back or something of that matter. And he was in an argument that they were asking him to leave. And so. Pretty upset about it. A gun was not pulled, but a gun was threat, yeah, it was, it was a man carrying gun and he. Showed it to insinuating he would use, yes. A little uncomfortable. Uh, we left. Me and my wife left, we gave um, uh, Mr. Hobbs and his wife a ride to their hotel that.
Okay, and. And then you.
Correct. I don't, I don't recall exactly doing anything specific, this, the billboard may have, I don't remember if it came later, I believe the billboard came later, maybe I did that, I don't remember the dates.
Okay, um, did you?
Yes, I did. I was, yeah, still a registered Republican. I I don't specifically, I don't know what, I don't know. Yes, I met, I met Karen when she turned in the signatures, I met her in Santa Fe. I don't remember. I believe I met Karen there and handed her some signatures, and then I I believe I left.
Okay, so it wasn't a long drawn out?
I don't believe so, no. Correct, yeah. Correct. I was the normal gathering, political gathering, I guess, uh. Friends, family came over to meet her. Let her speak for a minute. To be honest with you, I've heard a couple.
And you said probably, probably. Done that, but it's. Does want to change. You stayed in your deposition. Percentage is delicate, right?
That's correct.
And that.
No, that's not true, everybody in my family switched to Libertarian Party, I, I. Had already become a delegate with the Republican Party, and I did feel a responsibility toward the. People of Orange County that were, that had supported me and expected me to go and and vote. But but no, I I wasn't ashamed. If that's what you're asking of a parent to the Libertarian Party. Uh, my wife is a Libertarian, my wife switched over, everybody, my family did, I'm very outspoken about who I support. So I had no shame, I guess, that. I don't recall the exact conversation that that we had, but it's. That's possible.
And do you recall telling Karen?
I, that's possible as well, but felt like I was the one part of the doing it, yeah.
Asked in that conversation. Isn't true. You all wanted to do something for Karen. You had made it known.
Correct. Correct. Correct.
When this face says. Tell us what you're just. What is this?
So I believe. It it was my thought at the time that her campaign was not paying for it, not doing it, and so. We needed a disclaimer to disclose that it was not paid for by, I've seen other. Billboards or signage that say. Paid for by. Correct, that's, that was what I was. I I don't, oh, I mean, I was under the impression that there was gonna be other people that would probably want to be involved in paying for that, and it wouldn't just be me, so. I believe so, I don't, I don't know that we were discussing anything other than billboard signage.
Okay, but in your text message, you said it was banner.
Okay. We we, well, if we were to get, or it would have been, that's in a billboard, yes. Don't think we discussed it, if we did, I. Right, I I don't, I we, it's possible that I don't.
Okay, in the deposition, had other conversations. But we can't remember the days and times that it was about billboard, what was the substance of those conversations?
Before or after the bill? Before. Think we discussed a lot of different things. We discussed. Signages or billboards or that all. Built her campaign. Whenever I think you're in person or on the phone. Correct. Okay. I, yes.
That, what did you discuss during?
We discussed about a lot of things, and we discussed lots of things. I don't wanna call it bad conversations. I don't even remember what I had for breakfast, I have a hard time remembering conversations that I had for. That's correct. That's correct. That's correct. And David, David's the one that had the billboard, so we went back to what he had available, where he had them available.
Okay, okay, so.
Oh, correct, yes.
And, and then she says.
Correct. I took it to me, she was excited about it. Correct. I believe I did. I don't think so. There was just, there was six, seven, eight different artwork that they had available. And I, I think that it meant not, that it was not before the campaign, it was just private people that paid for it. Yeah, I was never aware that I was supposed to support anything, probably until I started getting subpoenas to come here. Okay. I don't recall that conversation. I don't, I don't. Okay, so you're talking about the meeting with Clements here in Albuquerque. Okay, there was another, okay, so I. Okay, okay, you're talking about, I mean, you're, okay. Yeah, I believe at that time, it came up that there was a situation, an issue with those billboards, but there was conflict about reporting, not reporting, whatever. So I did remember, I believe, from that time. Correct. Where I called you, like, first time. I do not recall that. I, I do not recall. Yeah, yeah, I could, yeah. Briefly, I, I, brief. Oh, okay. Yes, I, I know who you're talking about, Death Street. Correct.
So, whose idea was it?
Was it a Badoni banner? My brother's, that was my brother. I don't remember what he, I have to look at, look at pictures.
Do you know why there was no disclaimer?
I, I don't, I do. It's possible, yes. Several years prior to this, my brother had put up a billboard with him.
Okay, so is that?
Yes. I don't recall. I, I don't. True, I believe so. I, I don't, I don't exactly know how it all came together, but that's, I got the artwork from them and then sent it over to David. I don't recall anybody that did donate. I, I, I don't remember. Philip is a friend of mine and I don't know if he met Karen or heard of her or through me, maybe discussing her with, with him, and he wanted to support.
And when did you?
I, I don't recall. I don't know. With Philip, yes. I, I don't know about my brother at that point. I believe he paid for the artwork, the banner. So, so I didn't get the invoice in if Philip paid a hundred percent of it, or if he paid some and his friend paid some, or I don't know who he, I don't know where his monies came from, is what I was, is what I was. Philip back or? I don't know. I don't believe so. I, I don't believe I had any conversations. If I did, I don't remember. Yes. Just the links, I guess, to the, to, to be able to pull up the artwork. I saw it as a private individual putting it up. Possibly. Possible. I, I don't remember the conversation, but it's possible. It's, it's possible. Correct. Correct. I do not. Okay. Yes. 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 I don't have any reason to doubt it. That's not, not true. Conversation. Yes. I can't remember specific conversations.
Testimony today.
Yes. Billboard on night forty will be awesome if y'all can pull your money.
So, at the time, was Crystal Mavis aware that you and others might be pulling money to pay the fees out?
Yeah. Uh, no.
And the billboard.
No. No.
After, after sort of heard that there might be an issue. You had a discussion with Aurelio Giardino and others about whether to put more or not. Do you remember that last question you had on cross?
Yes. I believe she's talking about the time that I've met here in Albuquerque with Ray Leo. And there was some discussion and issues with the billboards being reported or not reported, supposed to be reported. Came up, there was an issue with the secretary state or somebody. And so, I was given, either I was given her phone number, or I gave her, or him, my phone to get into contact with her. I don't, I, I don't remember the conversation, I remember the call, but I don't, what it was. Very good. I believe so, yes. I did not. No. I'm not familiar with any political campaigns, this, this was the first campaign that I'd ever been a part of, and I just thought we could just put up anything we wanted to put, whenever we wanted to put it, I didn't know we had to, I didn't know that, or whatever. Like that, I, I just, I knew David, we've done something before, and I just thought that's the way to do it, was to call him and, and to pay for it. Correct.
On the text when she said
I think I told her where the available spot was. Yes, she says billboard on I-40 would be awesome. Okay, thank you.
You may not need to re-tape it, because I just need to move it a little bit forward.
Uh, yes.
Do you crystal pin us or carry it down?
So she's waiting in the Zoom now, I just have to be bitter, because the witnesses are not hearing them.
Probably make more sense to call Mr. Padoian last.
Let's wait until it gets back. Thank you. Quick, I can work on that. There may not but we ask both of you, did you have a chance to discuss Mr. Giardo's deposition, did you reach any favor? I'm not going to portion your question, there's objections, I went to, not reading, I'm just looking for the objections, there are only about a half dozen, but. Okay. I have to. That you're great response of that question and answer being admitted? The objection is foundation, I assume is because you're asking what they were trying to figure out, so that sounds to me like a speculation. You go on the record and make it more specific than you don't want to bring. The rest of the deposition gave for me. Okay, let's go back, let's go back on the record. We're back on the record, when we were in recess and discussed with council, the deposition testimony of Mr. Aurelio Giardo on July 10th 23. Council, reading that the objection on 21 answer times five through 10 be admitted, the rest of the deposition can be admitted as evidence. Now, Ms. Huns listed this deposition as the typically if a deposition, you would have someone part of the witnesses, read their questions and answers. Circumstances, in fact, there's not a jury. I assume council is okay with reading the deposition at the conclusion of our hearing today, and being considered a part of the evidence case. All right, call your next.
My name is David Raebold, I'm the managing partner of Sun Vistout for advertising. R A Y B O U L D. We're in the billboard bit, we have billboard date for No. Correct. It roughly, I-20, I-25 is around 5,000 vehicles a day, I-40 is anywhere from 16 to 20,000. Correct. We have 53 billboards, 159 faces.
That face, yeah?
Yeah.
Cracking it, it sounds like there are double the number of faces.
Well, on right read sides, you can have two faces, two small faces or one large, and on the cross read, just one large face. It, no, the face is the portion of the board that you can wrap the vinyl or the advertisement on, it's called a face. It's, you know, it's kind of the competition, the going rate. I put out a standard rate sheet and then negotiated up for depth. They can't. Correct. It was. We produced two.
How many billboards was your company hired to produce and display that support the term of your inventory?
We did two billboards, one was it, was outside of Edgewood, it was a 20 by 40, and then we did another billboard on I-25 south Santa Lucia exit 21 eight by. Uh, kind of right in the, right in the middle. I don't have an exact date, but I would say shortly after the, the primary. Yes. Yes.
Let me ask you. In general, you described that your sort of level process is from hiring.
Sure. Do you want me to use Ness's name since he contacted me? Mr. Ness contacted me. That told me that want to print a billboard supporting the. And did I have anything available? I checked my availability list. At first he wanted just billboard forty. So the, the normal procedure is. To, to tell him what the price would be, production. Production of the vinyl, the posting of the vinyl. I've got that. Price. He agreed with the lease. He signs the lease. That we take the artwork, the artwork that's been submitted to the printer. The printer actually get back to me ten day, eight to two weeks. At that time, it goes out to. Dollar and he installs. I believe it is. Gala is a graphic artist that I use out of Amarillo Tech. She develops artwork for me as well as submits artwork to the printer for me. Yeah. I'd say yes. No. Yes. She's a independent contractor. I believe he did. He paid for the production cost of the I twenty five billboard. Believe it was fifteen hundred dollars. I believe the sequence was they submitted artwork to me. Which I then forwarded to Gala. I believe it was too small. For our billboard, so that it go back. Design it. To fit this size. Okay. The bill, the artwork they sent us was not, was not of the type that we could adjust. So we had to go back to them and say, we need it designed or built for this size.
About the size, because the size they initially provided is not correct.
That's correct.
Did they subsequently provide the correct size at the time?
They did. Correct. I believe that they. I believe they contacted us initially or Steve, or Steve gave them our phone number and. To contact. Back and said, hey, we need. Oh, I was asked by Steve if I had any other billboards. In New Mexico, particularly on I twenty five. And I told him I did have some in the, you know, south of, the south of the.
Did the same.
I believe, well, the, the lease was with. Stephen Ness. And he told me that Philip would be paying the production cost. I believe he did. Again, we had a different sized billboard from the I forty one. It was a little, little bit smaller. And we couldn't, and it was coming up, if I remember correctly. It was coming up on the July fourth weekend. And Donnie camp, so we were trying. In touch with Donnie campaign, they had people traveling off for the holiday. And so. The, I believe that Gala was able to go in and adjust. Besides. Our work with that particular billboard. And then we sent it to them. Yes.
Quite a little more detail about why. I guess you said the billboard was a different size. Why? Why wasn't it?
Well, Steve wanted the billboard up as quick as possible. And Donnie campaign said they weren't able, weren't going to be able to get us the information we needed. Until after the fourth of July. As quickly as possible. Yeah, we took the same billboard that they developed for the I forty and then just resized it. So if you look at the two pictures of the billboards, they are, yeah. The only difference is. Picture of the billboard? Yes. Oh, okay. I have. Yes. It looks like it's emails between. The Badoni campaign. And also Gala. And. A crystal. Okay. I don't know. Correct. Where's that? Oh, yes, I see.
So is that consistent with your recollection about how the design and production, where it was redesigned?
I think you're, excuse me. You're using a term redesign. I think you're using the term size. Redesign, redesign would be taking the whole thing, making it the way the Gala wanted or I want. Did do that. We took what they wanted, resized it. Correct. Twenty five. Okay. Yes. It's a text message that I received. From Karen Badoni. It does. At the top of the, of the phone, it says five oh five, eight seven oh, three seven six five. You want me to read it or? Okay. It looks like it's the, it's kind of blurred, but it starts out with. It looks like it's the it's kind of blurred, but it starts out with phone number. Deposited new message. Hi, David. This is Karen from the donate campaign. We were told that you're going to do a billboard. You needed larger graph. We are communicating with my media team and they want to know what size. Guess the actual number that they need to blow up. And if they can do it because I know that they're still kind of beginner that it's we have to build it from scratch. I understand that we'll just kind of send you the photograph that we do. Um, but anyway, I'll call back later. Yeah. Thank you so much. My phone number is. And it can't read it, but I be at a cell service, so text me first and then I'll catch a signal and give a call back. Okay, thank you. First part is not readable. Light, so texting first, it's not getting the signal. Looks like it's repeat. Okay, thank you so much. Bye. Click here to full. Which point where is it? Oh, okay. Hello, David. Badoni team here. What is your email address? That he didn't have them. All right. Sorry, what? It's a text from Stephen Ness. It does. He asks if anybody ever got with me to get the artwork figured out. Okay. Yes. It's a text from between myself and Crystal. Discussing the sizing of the board. No. Yes, the text. No. 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 That was the first one, yes. Yes. For the production. Correct. Mr. Ness, yes. Correct. No. No. I'm assuming they did. They sent it to us. I have no idea. No. It came through as a text. It it could very well have been voice, but it came it came through on my phone as a text. It means that that telephone number that was before that that they had deposited a new message. I'd be quite honest, I really didn't think that much about it at the time. That's correct. No. Ever. That's correct.
Three sixty-four is not part of exhibit twenty-six. Twenty-four, twenty-five.
Twenty-five. I don't know whose phone number it is. Exactly. Just for the artwork. That's Crystal. Okay, yes, I believe that's correct. Thank you.
All right. Before you get Miss Mavis connected up. Do you have any idea how long this is going to take? I know she's giving a position, but I got the impression from the second one that she doesn't have much record. Let's get started if you don't finish by twelve o'clock, then we can have a reset.
Good morning, Miss Mavis. Can you hear me, Crystal? Crystal, can you hear? Can you hear us? Is there audio coming out of it?
Okay, I think I can, I think, can you? The speaker, it's coming out of this speaker, though. Crystal, can you hear me all right? Yeah, Ms. Sawyer, can you hear me? Yeah, should be getting her audio. This is going through to the Zoom meeting, so I don't know. Good morning, Ms. Sawyer. Can you hear me? You're on mute, Ms. Sawyer. Can you unmute yourself? Judge, we can recess.
Secondly, we tend to speak wrong.
Ms. Sawyer, can you hear us? Can you try speaking? We can break the troubleshoot, this judge. I mean, I, my, my view is that if we're trying to move on, we can take care of unavailable. It's based on the refusal to stipulate to her unavailability for purposes of using her deposition.
Well, there's trouble hearing, perhaps we could use the phone, see her, use this sound as a seeker.
Well, that may be a four-second choice. Let's take our break. And we've already used some, made some. Go back to 12:30, we're gonna do this way.